If you would please rise with the commission and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Here. Commissioners, Commissioner Frazier is delayed on an airline flight. I would ask a motion to excuse him. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Frazier as he is out of town and unable to get back in time.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Any further discussion from a commissioner?
None.
He may show up.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes.
Yes.
Anyone voting no by voting, by indicating, by saying no. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to the first item, or rather, two announcements. For the folks at home, we have not yet managed to repair the camera system in City Hall, which means we have one shot, which is the wide shot of everybody. We don't have the ability to use different camera, different lenses, and be able to zoom in on different speakers. So, single shot will be the only one we will have for the night. We do have a number of volunteer opportunities on citizen committees. Second, no, we haven't got there yet. We do have a number of different positions on city committees. Board of Zoning Appeals, we have three openings. Board of Review, three. Brownfield Redevelopment, two. Harbor Advisory, two. Investment Advisory, two. Local Development, two. Local Officers Compensation Commission, one opening. Market County Transit Authority, one opening. And Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee. That brings us then to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Item second, Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor signify by voting yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by voting no. Motion passes seven to zero. Your honor, there are six of us tonight. That is correct. The perfect meeting just kind of went away, didn't it? I would amend my comments and to reflect six zero. Now, I think the clerk has caught that. Shaking her head, yes. That brings us down to the appointment. Item number one, that would be the appointment of Mallory McDonald Parks Recreation Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending on 1/29/21. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Campana?
I would move that we appoint Mallory McDonald to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending 1/29/21.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Let's second the motion.
Any further comments, Commissioner Campana?
Just glad to see Ms. McDonald stepping up and doing this, volunteering for her community.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Comments from any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no. Motion passes six zero. I'm trainable. That brings us to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making comments.
Andrew Lawrence, 1406 West Avenue. Just some unrelated business, unrelated news today. Today was the beginning of Clean UP Marquette. A group of, actually cannabis activists, joined us today and cleaned up Presque Isle. So, I just want to remind everybody about the city cleanup on April 27th, and hopefully that you guys can join what we're calling the Trash Tag Marquette Trend and spend an hour and pick up Marquette. I also just got back from an emotional return at Lakeview Arena where the American Legion U-14 team returned from the national championships with a third place. They got third place in the nation, and if there's anything the city can do to maybe recognize them formally, I would encourage that. My only other comments is that I totally support the sale of parcel 13 to NTN, and I am glad that we're moving forward with Green Burial. I think that's kind of an antiquated thing that we have to reform, and I'm glad to see that's gotten support. So, thank you for your advocacy and bringing that to City Commission. That was really a citizens initiative that brought that forward. So, I appreciate that. So, thank you for your time.
Hi there. Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street. And I would reserve some time. I have a question on number 11, the purchase request. Okay, so that would be item 11.
Carrie Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street, Marquette. I'd like to reserve time to speak to item 11 as well, please.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item 11, please.
Elizabeth Bates, 208 Eagles Nest Road. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item number 10. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, that was number 11?
10.
10, thank you.
David Gill, 4130 County Road 550. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item five.
Howdy, folks. Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I guess I'll start off with, yeah, I would also like to reserve time on number 11, please. But I'm also here to talk about the newspaper project, or the newspaper story about the local, or the recent work session you guys put on about Lakeshore Drive. First, thanks for the Mindy Journal to keep track of that, because I would love to see a video of that work session, but those kinds of records don't seem to be available. So, second, $12 million seems like a lot of money. Even $3 million seems like a lot of money for a road that has no industry, no commercial, and no residential. It's a straight path through. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm going to try to explain myself a little later here, but the road itself, we all understand, is in bad shape. The road itself is literally just a portion of the streetway. But with We Energies going offline, we're going to have a whole lot of property over there to deal with. I would like to make a suggestion now that Presque Isle is continued beyond the RTI and over a bridge and into the We Energies portion of that side of our town. It'll make getting to the island a little bit easier, a little bit buffer of a side-by-side. All right, so I have a minute and a half left, and I got to make this quick. My suggestion is, instead of just two developers for that property, I would like to consider a third. And frankly, it's because of all the stuff that has been asked of you as a city and the Parks and Rec Department. A kayak run, a dog park, ice sculptures. I can go down a list. It's pretty long, because I was talking about it with some friends. But basically, an outdoor recreation consortium or committee or somehow make it an ORC, nonprofit organization, and leave the road, existing road and the bike path in place. Put two parking lots on either side, which will make access to the beach down on Holly Street a little easier. Put a parking lot over by NMU so that people don't have to park on the sand anymore. But allow that pathway to go through, because it's a lot easier for families and groups of bike riders or joggers to give each other space when you have the whole road. That's my complaint now about the road, is that bike path is a little too close and it's a little too narrow for the actual traffic that goes on that road, for both bike path and road traffic. So, my suggestion is to close off that road, leave it to the consortium, because when the waves do come in, we can use it as a water access point. But I'm going to try to finish this off later. Number 11, please. Thank you.
Frank Jepberdo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. As our weather warms and we're outdoors more, a rampant graffiti problem becomes more evident, a plague which this board is partly blamed for. At least twice this board was told, the best way to mitigate graffiti is to furnish our service vehicles with several colors of fast-drying spray paint. All our personnel need do is spray over the gibberish within a day or two. Either the vandals will realize it's not worth the risk to have their logos covered so soon, or they'll respray, which increases our chances of catching them. I caught one vandal, and mentioned this here, of course, no thank you from any member. I'm not asking for recognition, but the absence of a thank you bolsters my point that controlling graffiti is a low priority for this board, which by doing nothing over many years, has taken ownership of the problem. Our members aren't out of their cars enough to realize what a problem this is. Frank isn't the only one who it bothers. A majority of us don't like it, and we're sick of this board sitting on its heels, literally encouraging it by leaving graffiti in public view for months at a time. At least twice now, seven members, a manager, and a police chief ignored this recommendation. Didn't even try. We do not appreciate graffiti. You may not mind it, we do. Provide a large wall someplace where urban art is allowed. We also continue to await promised answers that never seem to come. Last fall, the service center and the manager's office told me a requisition was out to repair the sidewalk at 340 East Ridge. The manager later said this needn't be done until the active building permit expires. Now that the ice has melted, our sidewalk is muddy again. Two weeks ago, the service center said either gravel or wood planks would be set down temporarily. Still, nothing. Next example. The public and this board alike felt betrayed by handlers who weren't recycling our glass as we believed. Members promised to keep on top of this, yet many months later, no update. Then there's the tombolo off Picnic Rocks. We've heard nothing for months as our precious shoreline continues to erode. Then there's the member who said he'd conduct his own research on our fluorite controversy and report to us. He had plenty of time to offer us his findings before he left this board. He's still free to favor us with his findings during public comment. Until then, a lie from any member is a lie from this whole board. This explains why our relations won't improve so long as Mr. Stonehouse is here. Four of his known lies are etched on public record, though only one is consequential concerning the southwest corner of Founders. More recently, Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Frazier repeated the preposterous lie that I went after someone's wife up here. Their effort to discredit me by diverting emphasis off the key issues that affect many onto me. People who watch regularly know better than to believe that politically motivated lie. Our public record knows as well.
Anyone to address the commission? Anyone to address? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to the first of two presentations, and that'll be by the president of the Chamber, Christian Vierardi. If you could come up and begin.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Christian Vierardi. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. Joining me is our founding president and current board member, Matt Gujon. Thank you for your support in the past of the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. I just want to update the commission on some of the statuses of some of our programs. For example, Be Local, Buy Local program, which is one of our signature programs where shoppers can scan their receipts from participating local businesses to be entered into a chance to win a $50 gift card good at any of the participating businesses. In the past two years, we have surpassed $1 million in local sales to track through this program. This is a pretty significant number. What this means is that for every $1 million spent locally, 680,000 will stay in the Marquette community versus 430,000 if those dollars are spent online or at non-local businesses. The program currently has over 3,000 active users, 16,000 individual entries in that time, and there are currently 48 participating businesses, and that number continues to grow. So, what's next for the Be Local, Buy Local program? Obviously, we want to grow the number of participating businesses, and we also see advertising opportunities such as push notifications to app users, specials, sales for the participating businesses to be able to advertise for the users of the app. One of our other signature programs is Marquette 365, the online community calendar for Marquette County. This program was made possible thanks to the city of Marquette in the past, as well as Northern Michigan University, the Michigan Film and Digital Media Office. We received a grant from them through the Creative Chamber Pilot Program, the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, Travel Marquette, the Greater Ishpeming-Nagoni Chamber of Commerce, the Peter White Public Library, and local advertising. In the time period from April 1st, 2018, through March 31st of 2019, we had 131,000 online impressions, which is essentially people using that site. 427,000, I'm sorry, 42,727 users, and on average, there are a number of 118 events listed on average on any given day. Currently, as of 5 o'clock this evening, there were 137 events listed on the site. So, what's next for Marquette 365? The cost of the program is approximately $1,450 per year plus maintenance to operate. We anticipate that this will be a self-sufficient program by the end of the third quarter of 2019 through advertising opportunities, and in that time, we want to provide more partner training and public awareness for the program. Our other signature event, or not necessarily event or program, would be the Ampersand Co-Working and Community Space. Thank you, Mike Angeli and Fred Stonehouse, Mr. Campana, for coming out and spending time presenting at our Eggs and Issues or our Coffee Clutch in the morning, which we now call What's Brewing. Those opportunities for you to participate in those chamber activities on a weekly basis cannot be understated. They're very valuable to our community, as well as the members of the chamber. And next week, I believe Sarah Reynolds and Jenna Smith are going to be participating in our morning What's Brewing program. I'm going to turn things over to Matt now for a little bit.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk a little bit about what's... We're going through a little bit of a transition at the chamber, having cycled through a couple of executive directors now. An interesting thing has happened, as we are currently without an executive director. What we are seeing is that members of the chamber are stepping up to take on the yoke of operating the chamber, which is interesting and gratifying in that as the chamber was organized as a cooperative, it is a member-run organization. The Chamber of Commerce here in Marquette is not something that happens to a local business. The chamber is something that local businesses do together. Christian mentioned Ampersand, our co-working space downtown there. As part of our strategy moving forward, we are having discussions with strategic partners to take over management of Ampersand. There's a bright future in that for the facility. The facility itself is currently home to about 55 businesses right in downtown Marquette. That's significant. We consider that a significant success. We are using this time period, this transition time period, to get the chamber into a place where we can strategically and intentionally position ourselves to hire a new executive director or a member services coordinator. Currently, we have committees that have taken on much of the workload of the chamber. We have a membership committee made up of local, frankly, salespeople who are going to begin calling on existing members, members who have lapsed, and new members. We have a strategy committee that's working on the future of the chamber. And we have committees for each of the programs that Christian has mentioned, the Be Local, Buy Local, Marquette 365, all of that. So, it's a formative time again in our four-year history of existence here in Marquette, and the future is very bright. I cycled off of the board after the first three years, and when we had a resignation from the board, I stepped forward to come back, because I care about the chamber. And we find out through focus groups that we've hosted over the last few months that our members also care deeply about the chamber. So, we're in a really good position to move forward. We make a positive impact already, and the future is really bright for us. And I'd just like to say that this man is an incredible president of the board of the Marquette Chamber, and we thank him very much.
Thank you.
Can you take questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Campana?
You guys are doing a good job. We do see you're holding your own. How are you doing retaining businesses, your membership? Just numbers, I mean, when you first started, it was like, you know, you were kept hitting levels. Have you peaked out, gone down, or you still continue? You are going after new membership at all times, but out of curiosity, how is your membership?
Yeah.
Totals?
Being transparent, at our most, we topped out at maybe around 200 members. We're down some. Most of that is due to not so much a lack of attention to members, but some systemic issues with invoicing and then having, frankly, the staff to go out and make touch with those members. That's being rectified by our membership committee now, which is five persons strong and is about to be unleashed on Marquette.
We actually have a very aggressive goal of adding 50 new members by the end of 2019. We understand that it's a challenge and it's a very aggressive number, but we have a plan to do it, and we're going to execute on that plan.
Do you encompass the city of Marquette and both townships?
We do.
And that's it? That's your area?
49855, technically.
Okay.
And that being said, we would like to invite you to a future elected officials meetup with Marquette and Chalkley Township in the future. We just don't have that scheduled yet, but that's something we will be working on.
Sure, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you characterize the businesses that are, the 55 businesses that are at Ampersand?
Sure. Most of them are independent small businesses, sole proprietors, a couple franchisees of nonprofits, if you will. I call them franchisees basically because they're the local office of a nonprofit that's based in lower Michigan. Graphic designers. Information technology, IT guys. There's a couple of IT guys in there. We have a cybersecurity expert in there. There's an attorney currently renting space from us, an independent attorney.
Commercial loan officer. Michigan Energy Options is located there, renewable and alternative energy nonprofit in the state.
We have a grant writer for the United Nations that works out of there right now, as well as, in the past, we had a freelance author, as well as a voiceover artist that worked out of Ampersand, so.
You know, one thing that we neglected to mention in our presentation is the Evolve Marquette Committee, which is the committee of creatives. That is an official committee of the chamber, not an ad hoc committee. And those are the folks that are responsible for the creative residence program here in Marquette, where we have the three artists and residents that are currently residing at one Marquette place, the new development down at Founders Landing, who are spending their time here in Marquette and interpreting it through their work for the benefit of everyone here. There are many events that are hosted in Ampersand, just in the public space there. Anytime you go downtown, you drive by in the evening, it's, you know, you can easily see that the space is filled with people for one event or another. The Seat at the Table, which is a program from the Evolve Committee that highlights a creative in our community who gets to talk about what they do. The other night, there was, what was the bicycle group? I can't remember the name.
Oh, Start the Cycle.
Start the Cycle, yeah.
I'm a mentor for Start the Cycle.
Start the Cycle was there. I drove by on my way home that night, and I was like, holy cow, what's going on at Ampersand? It was full of people.
Eighty-two people in that space at that time. That was pretty incredible.
Yeah, and the space is used by a variety of organizations and used often.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Christian and Matt, for coming tonight. I appreciate you giving a presentation. Sounds like you've got some short-term goals that you have to work on right now by necessity with what you've got going on. Wondering what some of your long-term goals are the next five years, once you've solved those short-term problems that you're already working on, if you could fill us in on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. We want to be the hub for business activity within Marquette County. We want to be a sounding board for our members, as well as the community, and a place that brings together entities that don't typically work together when we're talking about the DDA, NMU, the Peter White Public Library, Travel Marquette, the city of Marquette. In the past, we collaborated on the community calendar, and we want to continue those types of collaborations moving forward, and we want to be the hub for those activities.
The other commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming in and speaking with us and letting everybody in the audience too know what's going on in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
It's obviously extraordinarily important to the city, extraordinarily important for our future. Thank you very much for taking the issue out and believing what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your next presentation will be the Investment Advisory Board, presented by Chair Dave Rayom.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, I'm Dave Rayom. I'm a business professor at the Northern Michigan University College of Business, and I'm now beginning my second term as a member of this committee. And if our presentation starts, we'll continue. There we go. So, this is a regular report that we make to the commission. And the purpose of our Investment Advisory Board is to oversee the management of the funds that are held by the city. Established in 1980 by the City Commission, and our goal is to make sure that the money is invested in the safest possible way with the maximum amount of return that we can gain. And if you're familiar with the investment world, those are two very difficult things to combine. But the city of Marquette does a very, very good job. We have a five-member board. I'm the chair. As you can see, we have two vacancies. We have Gary Simpson, who's the Chief Financial Officer, and Mary Schlitt, the City Treasurer and Board Secretary. We meet once a quarter and more often if necessary. And last year, we had four regular meetings and one excused absence. Investment policy for the city of Marquette is managed in accordance with Public Act 20. Investment policy was adopted by the City Commission in November 1997. It was updated twice, March 2008 and December 2014. And the investment of public funds is based on strict adherence to applicable statutes, judicial decisions, and legal opinions, which means we don't get to invest in cryptos. Investment policy has received national certification and was awarded a certificate of excellence by the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada in August of 2015. As of February 28th, 2019, this is our balances in the accounts, and you'll notice from the top going down, the bank or the financial institution that issues the security. And the next column is when it was purchased. The next column is when it matures. And the annual yield at this point in time, and the amount of money that is in each account. So, the total in the general accounts is $20,493,160. Now, if you're interested, up at the top, where it says purchased and matured- Now, if you're interested, up at the top where it says purchased and matured, there is no date. And that's because those are short-term cash money market accounts and they do earn interest. And then we have in the next group, short-term investments that, that mature within the next year. And then we have some money market funds that again are doing, have a maturity date, but do provide interest. And then we have some longer-term securities that go out as far as 2031. And one thing that you might note is, is that in, in finance investment, there's a very important concept called investment horizon matching, which means that you need to have short-term, medium-term and long-term investments so that you can meet the obligations as they come available. You don't want to have anything tied up in short-term and not be able to match up with your long-term requirements. So they, they do a very nice job of this also. We have an account with the Marquette Area Waste Water Treatment Fund Plant. There's $3.3 million in that. Then we have $500,000 in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. So the total of all the funds is $24,307,659. So the goals of the Investment Advisory Board is to continue to review the investment status, maturity dates, portfolio yield. And at our meetings, we do talk about interest rates and expectations and current events that might affect that. And so we modern analyze the cash flow needs using what's called the prudent investor standard while meeting the primary investment objectives of safety, liquidity and a reasonable return on the investment. We also have a semi-annual review of the special assessment and interest rate policy and recommended payment terms for that policy. I believe at this time, that policy is not being used by anybody in the city, so. But it's important to have it. Of accomplishments, we continue in the City of Marquette to retain a low fiscal indicator score, which demonstrate, demonstrates financial stability among municipalities in the state of Michigan. And also each year for the last 32 years, the city has received a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report and the Governor's Finance Officers Association. So this year, the overall investment portfolio yield is 1.18%. And that is compared to 0.98% for the same time period a year ago. Questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hill?
Are any of these funds what would be considered the rainy day fund? The fund that we would dip into? Or is this money to be considered just always out there gathering interest and on reserve? Or not even on reserve? It's that it's there generating interests of to, for us to have assets to borrow against or things like that? Could you?
For the exact details of the funds, I'll defer that question to my mentor, Gary. Gary is the CFO.
Hi, I am Gary, the chief bean counter for the city. So at any given point in time, a lot of the money that you see, that you saw on the investment sheet that I do each quarter, a lot of that is restricted money. Now, we do have some that we're holding in reserve. We specifically did that for the, foreseeing the shutdown of the We Energies plant, of which we probably have $2 to $3 million in reserve for that. And I would consider that about our only free reserve. And I use the term free, not in a good way, because we're going to need that money to tide us through until We Energies, that property can be developed and be put back on the tax rolls, so. It's a very tight ship. And each year, I dread this presentation because the very next day, I'm always hit with, oh, I see you got $20 million to spend. And it's not anywhere close to that. So we very, we walk a very tight line as to between solvency and insolvency at any given time, even though we do have $20 million. But a lot, like I said, a lot of that is restricted for legal purposes.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Thanks for the presentation, Dave. I'm wondering when the meetings are and how long they are. I know we've got two vacancies in the effort of recruitment. Looks like you've only got about four meetings a year. Can you tell me what kind of a time commitment that is?
On the vacancies on the meeting? Actually, I have two people that have agreed to sign up.
Oh, glad to hear that. Well, never mind. Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
Dave, I noticed the interest rates of return are not the greatest, but they're not good anywhere. But these seem to be lower. But I think I remember, the city cannot just invest in speculative high-interest fund or securities. They have, they're limited to what they can invest in. I mean, you could be getting higher interest rates, you know, with an online bank, but apparently you can't do that. Is that correct?
Gary? I don't know why he went.
I mean, it'd be nice to get a higher interest rate, but I think you're probably operating at the highest you can get at this time.
So I'm not sure if I heard the full question, but I think you're asking basically what restrictions were under. And as you saw in the presentation, we're regulated by, all municipalities are regulated by Public Act 20 from the state. And that severely restricts municipalities, what we can invest in. We can invest in U.S. government securities. And we can actually, interestingly enough, buy bonds from other cities if we wanted to. But once you get outside of that, it's very restricted as to what we can do. So that's why we have a benchmark on earning on our portfolio 1%, which isn't even beating inflation. But with the guidelines that we have, that's actually considered to be very good to hit 1% with our type of portfolio. Now, I'd love to be able to buy lottery tickets and that kind of thing, but that's not going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Gentlemen, thank you for the presentation. I want to go back to your achievements, if we can, a couple, a couple slides back and give you an opportunity to maybe expand on the accolades that you got, especially if I'm not mistaken, the one from the, the governor. And I'm going to throw it out there and I'm sure Gary's going to be able to figure out what I'm really trying to say here. The, the one that comes to all of our retirees and their pensions and all this stuff have to be very closely monitored. And there was a point in time when we were, we were doing much better than most communities, but could have seen some improvement. And you've gotten us up a couple more stairs on that process. My point is, and you're going to clean this up for me, I have faith in you, man. My point is, is that it's, it's really, it's an important component to how the city takes care of not just its current employees, but its past employees. And when we were down at the most recent Michigan Municipal League, it was talked about a number of times about other communities that are really struggling to make up for those shortcomings or shortfall in funding, that they just kind of didn't, didn't either anticipate or didn't, didn't pay attention, enough attention to. And now they're, they're really struggling to provide for their, for their community as a whole. So are you following where I'm coming from with this? Or have I left you out in left field?
Well, this board doesn't really deal with that. But I, as part of my position, that's something that I and Susan Bohor and Jen LaPage is learning about as well. And we're one of those communities. We're right there on the line. The state instituted a new report that all municipalities, municipalities have to do. Last year, they implemented that. And you have to report on a number of different factors. And there's primary tests and secondary tests. And one of, one part of our retirement didn't pass. So we had to jump through some additional hoops and show the state what we're doing. And we're probably, and I don't know the exact numbers, but probably 75% of all municipalities flunked the first year. We're probably about the only municipality that did not pass the first go-round that was given a waiver to proceed. So I just completed the tests for the current year and we did pass. So that was very good news. When it comes to the pension system, it's largely dependent on investment returns. And if anybody had investments in December 2018, you saw it was absolutely no fun. So that could come back to bite us the next time I have to report. But we won't know that for a while yet. So we're right there on the edge, but I think we're being very responsible in how we're handling everything.
Thanks for, thanks for cleaning it up for me. But my point is along that, is that there's so many facets that we don't think about. And whether it's this side or, or the other side that we're talking about there, I just really thank you guys for keeping such a close tab on it and, and making sure that we're doing the best we can. So thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming in and presenting to us. Obviously, what you're doing is critical to the city, its people. That brings us down to two public hearings. First one will be on the sewage revolving fund, drinking water revolving fund. And the second one will be on applications for water. Number four, drinking water, sewage water, 13 degree background.
Thank you, Mayor, background. On January 28th, 2019, the Market City Commission approved a professional services agreement with Donahue and Associates, Inc. for the preparation of a state revolving fund, drinking water revolving fund project plan. The project plan is the first step in the SRF/DWRF loan process in securing financing. To secure funding and be considered for loan forgiveness, a public hearing is required. The SRF/DWRF project plan must be adopted by the City Commission in the form of resolutions by May 1, 2019. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the attached resolutions adopting a final SRF/DWRF project plan for water and wastewater system improvements and designate the city manager as the authorized project representative. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Ms. Goodman, I believe you have a presentation for us?
Correct. Yeah. My name is Kurt Goodman, Director of Municipal Utilities. We're going to do a joint presentation here. I'm going to talk a little bit about the state revolving fund, drinking water revolving fund. And then Craig Heisel from Donahue is going to talk about some of the requirements that is required as part of this presentation. In putting together this presentation, I thought it might be a good idea to just give an overview of what the state revolving fund and drinking water fund is. Just sort of the importance of it as we look for alternative financing plan, plans to finance some of our much-needed infrastructure. The City of Marquette is part of, there is an adopted strategic plan. And one of the key components of a strategic plan and infrastructure is to maintain regulatory compliance, operational performance, maintain a safe work environment. You always look ways to improve efficiency that would reduce, you know, your cost of operations and conserve water and other resources. So that's really what we're doing is we're really following the City of Marquette's adopted strategic plan. I've done quite a few budgets in the last probably 20 years. And every time we do a budget presentation about water sewer during the budget process, the, you know, this commission, past commissions always asked, what financial options are out there to fund these much-needed infrastructure projects? So that's what we're trying to do, is to give a, a city commission some options to finance our plan. The SRF/DWRF loan programs, it was established by the Federal Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Acts. There's 51 state programs that operate the, the program that we're looking at to participate. Some of the key components, it's definitely low-interest loans for infrastructure improvements. I want to emphasize too, that SRF is, you know, mostly sewer revolving funds on the wastewater side and drinking water. Unfortunately, there isn't, like the streets, stormwater isn't part of this. So this is, just pays for some of the water and sewer cost. And probably the big one that I'm going to talk a little bit more about is if you're, this will be the fifth SRF/DWRF program that I participated in. And one thing, through this program, we've been very, very fortunate to get principal loan forgiveness. And the, the benefit of being in this program is that opportunities do come out to get 40% forgiveness. The governor might put together a program that give people or communities that are involved in SRF/DWRF the first crack at some, some grant money, some loan forgiveness. So that's really something I like to stress, you know, without being in this program, you don't even have an opportunity. A little bit more on, in 2015, as the last updated, clean water had $60 million, which is for wastewater, drinking water, 27 million. One thing this program does, which I think is a good positive thing, is it does require financial sustainability. That means you do have to show that you have enough revenue coming in versus your expenses going out. And when I talk about principal forgiveness, if there's anything, projects, and we're looking at this really, really closely. If we can some way tie some of our projects that you'll see, Craig will show a little bit later, into a, some sort of green project, then we would qualify for loan forgiveness. So that's really my challenge in the next, you know, couple of months, is to really put on my salesman hat and talk to the DEQ and say, hey, you know, we're doing some good projects that, you know, please consider us for loan forgiveness. As I mentioned before, this will be probably the fifth SRF/DWRF that I've been involved in. A little bit of history, 2003 was our first one. This was a lift station, lift station project. And one thing during that project, we were able to fund the fiber optic that the city currently uses as the backbone for communications. And that was a sort of a, I was able to get that in there to, using the SRF fund to pay for that. And in 2006, we were all set to do a wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We're talking about $15.3 million. And just because we're in the program, I believe it was Governor Granholm came out with a, called a S2 program for design engineering. And December of that year, within probably about two, three weeks, we were awarded $956,000. And that was, that was just, I, I called a Christmas present and made Judy Akala, who was the city manager at the time, a pretty happy person. And then another grant we got was a $25,000 S2 grant. And then the most recent one, we funded Island Beach Water Main Project and a couple of projects at the wastewater plant. And we were, we were able to prove that some of those projects qualified for green reserve money. And once again, not being in this program, we wouldn't realize those, those loan forgiveness. So that's the, that's the really cool benefit about it. One thing that has put together the state revolving, DWRF project plan, it's very important that we have used information through the Capital Improvement Plan, the most recent financial plan that we presented to the City Commission, some of the strategic planning. So all of it, everything that we, we were providing here has been discussed at the commission and public input level. And so we are following, you know, pretty much a pretty good path of what of what the commission's direction has provided us. This does fall in line, you know, regardless if we use SRF/DWRF funding, bonding, you know? If we don't use it, we're still going to have to follow the financial plan moving forward. So whatever mechanism the commission decides to use, we still have to, it's important that we stick to that financial plan. And again, that will be up to the commission as we go through the budget process. Let me go back. And just, and one thing too, that this, what we're asking the commission tonight is really to approve a resolution to submit a project plan to be considered. We're not, all we're going to do is, we're going to just get lined up, the state goes through a pretty detailed process, and then they'll say, okay, our three-year, it's a three-year plan, and saying that, you know, there is funding for Marquette that meets the criteria to move forward. The good thing about this program is the, your only bond of what you, projects you do. So it's like a draw account. I think we explained that during a previous meeting. So if the commission only approves, you know, four projects, that's the only projects that will be, you know, go to the next step. So it's totally up to the city commission and the residents to, during the budget process, to decide what goes into the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two project plan. So that's, that's sort of in a nutshell. Once again, I'm a proponent of this. It is time-consuming, it's sort of, it takes a little bit of a, it takes work, but I think, as you can see, it has paid off for the benefit of the city, and I do think it's being a little fiscal responsibility, looking for alternative funding sources. Okay, moving forward, the second part of this presentation Craig is going to talk about, these are some requirements that we have to include in this public hearing. So, we're going to go through some of the projects and some of the requirements, just so that, it's important that we meet the required public hearing requirements. So with that, Craig?
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, commission, for letting me be here today. So, so again, Kurt kind of gave some of the background of the SRF and DWRF kind of loan history and some of the kind of successful history that the city has, kind of working with this, with this program. And then I plan to kind of walk through the details of the project plan and then just provide some background on the specific projects that are part of it. And as Kurt mentioned, this is kind of the first step in this, in this process, developing the project plan and then going through this public hearing process, you know, just to kind of move, to move forward with it. So, this first slide is a little bit about the requirements for developing the project plan. First element is identifying opportunities for investment within the system and then establishing priorities. And the city really does that as part of their strategic planning process. So all we're kind of doing is building upon that kind of foundation that the city does, you know, kind of through their, their different processes. And then the next step is, is kind of looking at some alternatives in order to implement that strategic plan. And as a, as a part of the requirements of putting this project plan together, the guidelines from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, we have to look at different alternatives. One alternative is to no action. So if the city didn't take this, this, look at this investment and took no action, you know, what would be the costs and benefits or risks to the city for that no action? And then another, another alternative is looking at opportunities for optimization or regionalization, so that was also included as part of the project plan. And then also looking at what these investments might do from a cost-benefit arrangement. And then the next step is, you know, identifying the most favorable alternative, the recommendations, and then considering what impacts those costs would have on, on the users. So that's really kind of in a, you know, a five-bullet point discussion on how the project plan is developed. And then a little bit on the, the goals of it, you know, again, just reinforce what Kurt had said, you know, the concept is to kind of build upon the city's strategic planning process and then focus, as far as these, the SRF and DWF loans are concerned, focus on developing drinking water and wastewater treatment infrastructure, and then again, to follow kind of this, this two thousand, or the six-year capital improvement plan that the city's developed, and it was incorporated into the two thousand eighteen rate analysis. So really, the approach is to kind of just keep building upon that information. And then there's, there's a couple kinds of projects that are included in the project plan, and the first ones are associated with the, with street reconstruction projects and street improvement maintenance projects. And then with those projects, the SRF and DWF loans would fund the water system and then the wastewater collection system improvements that are associated with those, those projects. So, in addition to the, as part of the street reconstruction projects, if pipes are replaced or improved upon, this funding would then, would then address that. Then another kind of group of projects that are part of this are ones that the city's planning to submit with the idea of, you know, hopefully getting the forty percent loan forgiveness as part of it. So there's two projects that are associated with that. One is the Lincoln Water Booster Pump Station, and hopefully that will qualify for loan forgiveness for energy efficiency. And then there's a second project that's associated with improvements to the biosalids handling at the wastewater plant, and then we're hopeful that that, through kind of a business plan process, would also qualify for this loan forgiveness. And then the next few slides I have are just kind of details associated with, with those projects. So this first one here is associated with the city's street improvement maintenance project. So the city has an approach where they look at their different streets and do a kind of a Paser rating analysis, and then the streets that are, that are planned for improvement, the approach is to incorporate, and our project plan is to incorporate the replacement of the sewer laterals as part of that. So if you're going to do a pavement improvement project, then we want to make sure we're addressing some of the infrastructure underneath that, that street as part of it. And the map just kind of shows the different locations by year where those projects are planned, so there's a number of different projects by year that are incorporated in that. Again, the goals are to extend the life of the assets and then coordinate street repairs with improvements of the infrastructures underneath the streets, and then, and then, you know, overall, the intent is to, you know, provide the service at the lowest cost. What happened to our map, map there? But this is, this is another project that's associated with the streets, and this is what we call a street reconstruction project. So in this case, instead of just repaving the, the streets, the streets are excavated, and then this is, this project, the SRF/DWRF component of it includes replacement of the sewer pipes and then the drinking water pipes that are beneath the street. And in most cases where this is, where this is done, the adequacy for fire flows for the streets, and then the capacity of the sewer lines needs to be increased to, to account for services in those areas. So this, this map, if it were illustrated here, would show kind of where the different locations are of those projects are by year. And again, you know, aligning with the, the street improvement maintenance projects, the intent here is to coordinate street replacements with, with the infrastructure beneath the street, and then manage kind of overall replacement costs, and then also to address some deficiencies in the system, such as collection system capacity, and then, and then also fire water So this, this project is associated with a Lincoln Avenue Water Boost Pump Station. So this pump station provides service to, I think, the, kind of the eastern half of the city of, eastern part of the city of Marquette. And so the intent for this project is to look at, to that, that system, providing that service, and see if there are ways to improve energy efficiency, maybe through variable speed drives or things like that, and also to address some aging infrastructure, this pump station's about thirty years old. And then again, the hope is, because, you know, we'll reduce the overall energy consumption for the system, that this will qualify for a green, green project reserve project, and then we would submit a business case for that, for that loan forgiveness. And then, then the final kind of major project that's a part of it is the solids handling improvements project at the wastewater treatment plant. So this project involves some additional process equipment, some, some additional biosalads storage, and then some kind of solids load-out facilities. And the intent here is to, to kind of maintain the city's ability to beneficially reuse the biosalads, to manage risks associated with their National Pollution Discharge Elimination System compliance, and then also overall kind of lower the cost for disposing of, of the biosalads. And again, because of the nature of this project, the hope is that this will qualify for a green project reserve and loan forgiveness, and a business plan will be developed as part of this to, to, to support that. So, we kind of, we talked a little bit about putting the project plan together and some of the elements that are associated with that, and then we kind of talked about some of the projects that, that are incorporated into the, the project plan, and then also requirement with this process is to address environmental impacts that, that may be associated with that. So, the project plan was, was, the elements of the project plan were sent out to different regulatory agencies, the Michigan Natural Features, Land and Water, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and some other locations. So the intent is to get some feedback on, on, on these departments' interpretation of the city's project plan as it's related to the environmental impacts. And then we also looked at the direct impacts that may be associated with these projects. You know, again, we want to make sure we're mitigating potential impacts with noise, dust, and things like that, especially with the street reconstruction projects. The intent is for, for the street projects to be, to take place in the street right away, so there should be any issues with, with impacts to areas outside of that. And then another element that was evaluated was, you know, these projects, will they impact wetlands or floodplains or things like that? And, and the way that the projects are set up now, there should, should be no impact there. And then also, we looked at indirect impacts. There should be no impact on, on changes to land use or impacts to air or water quality. So this is a, this is a table of, that just itemizes the different kind of projects that are included in the project plan, and then kind of summarizes the planned implementation by year. And you can see that the two thousand twenty includes some, what we call, street reconstruction projects, so there's eight projects associated with that, and then also the street, street improvement maintenance projects, costs associated with that. And then two thousand twenty-one has a number of additional projects, includes more street reconstructions, more pavement improvements, some pipelining, and then also evaluation of the Lincoln Water Booster Pump Station, and then the solids handling project that we discussed, and then two thousand twenty-two has some additional reconstruction projects, pavement projects, and also improvements to the Lincoln Water Pump Station. So this is, this is my final slide, and this is just kind of a summary. So again, you know, just to further reinforce what Kurt went through, the goal is to align our infrastructure improvements with, you know, what, what the city's strategic plan and also was incorporated in the two thousand eighteen rate analysis. So these projects that we kind of just walked through are, you know, a lot of them are the same projects that were evaluated as part of that, that process. Then we looked at the, the impact of, of rates on, on users, on the water system and on the sewer system. And again, the intent there is for that to align with that two thousand eighteen rate analysis, and those rates that are summarized up there don't include the possibility of the principal forgiveness that we talked about. And then, and then again, to reinforce that, you know, the commission isn't allocating funds through this process, all we're trying to do is just get approval to submit the project plan to the state and then just keep moving forward with, with, with this, with this process. So, I speak with Kurt, we appreciate your time.
Commissioners, any questions?
Your honor.
Commissioner Campion.
Your honor, I don't want to interrupt, but this is a public hearing, and I think you need to open the public hearing at some point before you start taking questions.
Should we do commissioner questions before the public hearing or post to the public hearing, or as part of it?
I think the public hearing ought to take place first.
Then we'll do it that way. Public hearing is declared open. Any members of the public desiring to address the, the issue before the commission, please do so now.
Matt Loonberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette, and sure, just because somebody has to say thank you very much for doing all of these. I am, I am curious though about the map and which projects are done at which time. That would be something helpful to look at in the PDF for me. But, no, for the most part, it struck me as odd that there's a hundred and twenty dollar, what, the rate fee that you had, the five-year rate changes, we're up to about a hundred and twenty dollars for our monthly fees for city water and sewer. It just seems high for having such a resource that we have, but I understand it. I mean, don't get me wrong, I understand it, there's a lot of projects that have to happen. I would like to see, however, a bond taken out to kind of reduce the cost of what it is to the city residents as a fee-based, if possible, because I know the finances that we just listened to has a lot of restrictions about what we can spend money on. But the thought is to try to keep the, the cost of living down for the city residents. And we all know that it has to happen, we all know that it's going to happen, but if there's a way that you can tell a new couple that comes into town, or a new family that comes into town, or an existing family that's in town, you folks, it really, I mean, we are all paying this universally, and, and I get that, there's a common cost to improving our water systems, but if we can present less than three-figure monthly costs for our water, I would like to see that. And again, thank you for your time, thank you for the map, thank you.
Anyone else desiring to address the issue before us? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hill.
All right. I love this stuff, y'all, so be careful, this is my, this is where I geek out, because having clean water and having, treating our wastewater and sending it out to the lake in a healthy condition is part of what makes Marquette a great place to live, as public commenter was just saying. So, if, my, one of my questions, I have three questions. What, what would you, if you were getting to have one more thing on this plan, what's the thing you had to cut off that you wish you could also get done? Is it, can you even, is it possible to say that? I'm just curious, like, I'm sure you've spent so much time thinking about these things that need to get done, what's the, what's the other thing that needs to happen as we think about?
Yeah, basically, as we mentioned before, the project plan follows the adopted capital improvement plan. In the, in two thousand twenty, there's a lot of projects that were delayed from two thousand nineteen. And what we, what we did is, we did include the two thousand nineteen into the two thousand twenty project plan for the commission to consider. As I mentioned before, if the, it's the city's, you know, decision to set the bond limit or whatever, whatever projects they wish to do will be incorporated into the project plan. So, I don't have any other projects, I don't have any in my back pocket at all, but again, these are all based on, you know, the budget process, the CIP process, so, and again, we tried, we tried to really follow the protocol as assessing the needs.
Thank you. So that means public, that we're going to, we have budget hearings, we've already set them in August. So when you're tired of playing outside in the beautiful August weather, come on in and talk to us about budget stuff, because it's going to be really important, because that's what's determining what we're talking about right now. Those will be up on the website. So I know that, like, in the polar vortex year, we had a lot of broken pipes, we've had some let-run orders this year, even with the crazy winter that we had. Is there anything to know about how Is there anything to know about how you've had to plan for climate change or other extreme events in making these recommendations?
Well, I think anytime you make any improvement to infrastructure, it, it's going to improve to deal with the, the elements. I know that engineering standards, the city has, has looked at those for the depth of water mains, sewer mains, so a lot of those, anytime you do a project, a lot of these outside influences are taken consideration. I know for colder temperatures, when they, when you have a water main project, you always like to loop the water main, and that does a couple of things. It increases for better fire flow, then also it gives, keeps the water moving instead of some of the dead ends that the city has. So I, I do think, you know, good engineering principles is taken consideration for climate change. So I, I, I think that, I think the city does a pretty good job, you know, dealing with that.
Are we, I feel like I remember learning when the polar vortex winter of 1314 that we had to bury the pipes deeper, are we still doing that?
Oh, yes, yeah. I think at the time, the standard was six feet, and I think the requirement now is minimum of seven feet. And I do think certain deal with soil conditions, I think they also put additional insulation in.
And then, my last question is, how, just, and it's likely that, you know, you're planning your three years ahead, how do you roughly plan for the, the costs I would expect are going to rise every year? Is inflation built into these costs, and how, how is that accounted for?
Yeah. If you go to the next step, part, you got part one, two, three application, the, the program does allow for a 15% contingency. And once again, the, the beauty of this program, it's very flexible, so if the city doesn't come, you know, approve all the projects in 2020, we can then move it to 2021. And then, but, well, well, these are budgeted numbers, I think engineering department really does an excellent job in their cost estimates that do consider inflationary, so, you know, so that, those are, those are, that's a good point.
And then would the, if we do go forward with Lake Shore Boulevard, would any of this be impacted by the spending that's going to happen on Lake, potentially happen on Lake Shore Boulevard?
No, this, none of the projects listed in this is, was included, you know, Lake Shore was not included. I know there's some costs to help out, you know, for some waters, sewers, you know, infrastructure, but it was not included.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel.
Thanks, guys. Just clarification, at the beginning, Kurt, I wasn't sure if you said it or not the way I heard it, but all of, whatever comes from both the SRF and the DWRF, he, the monies that, that can be directly used in conjunction with all of our SIMP programs for the next, at least the next three years as we have them outlined.
Correct.
Okay. For some reason there, I thought earlier that you said that they, they were not.
Yeah.
These are all eligible, and, and since these are already laid out from the engineering department, it's pretty easy to plug them in where you can use them. Okay. I wasn't sure if it was just specific uses, whether it's laterals and things along those lines.
Yeah, I think in the last slide, anything, they're, they're broken out, anything that deals with SIMP for water and sewer, that's what's eligible, so.
Okay. And SIMP is for people that are, like me, it's street improvement, maintenance project, those are the things that they've been outlining for at least three years out, sometimes even five, if I'm not mistaken, but.
And again, like, we talked earlier about the green reserve, I'm really hoping that maybe some of those laterals, you know, some of the, might qualify for it, you know, it's, it's worth a shot.
Okay.
Kurt, thank you for the presentation, sir, thank you. It seems too good to be true. I mean, we're doing, we get benefits for things that we're already doing. I mean, you looked at all these projects, and the city's already doing them. Is this something that we have to apply for every year, or is it a long-term?
And it's basically, you know, when I made a recommendation in January, you know, I talked to the finance director, I talked to city manager, we were looking for ways that we could some way, possibility, you know, you know, finance some of these projects with a benefit. And again, I do believe with the governor's action to improve him, you know, find funding for infrastructure, I just thought it would be a good idea. So I did bring this forward back in January, the commission approved, you know, authorizing, hiring a Donahue to assist in putting, you know, the project plan right now, and that has been on public notice, is 271 pages, you know, so there's a lot of work put into this in the last two months, you know, just to get this step. But, but yeah, each year you'll have to do a shorter version of an application. This is the big portion of it.
So when we apply, is there a chance we won't be accepted into this project plan? Or is it kind of like, if you apply, you get it?
Well, in August, they'll come out with the priority list, and then that's when all the communities, they evaluate, but I've been told by DQ that there's plenty of money in this program to fund all of the projects.
Last question. If we get loan forgiveness, we get money back, does that affect the rates at all? Will the rate, or is it just hold the rates from going up? Because each year we look at, you know, raising the water rates, and I believe we're on schedule to raise them.
Correct.
Do we get a break somewhere, or is it?
That would be up to the commission decision. Part of the process, too, we have to do a user charge evaluation, so that's another step that, once we do the part one application, you'll be getting more information of exactly the impact, well, better numbers then.
Okay. And, if I didn't say, in defense of our water rates, the city of Marquette, their rates are in the middle of the pack of the communities across the UP, so I don't feel like we have high rates. I mean, they're high, but there's a lot of places that have it higher, so we're, we're still okay, I feel.
I, I do hear word on the street right now, that, that, other communities right now, you're going to see some pretty double-digit rate increases in the next year, big time.
Good, thank you, that's a lot of important work, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the information you did, and was, and the presentation, the detail in it, it is a critical thing for us. It's a great opportunity to participate in the program, and certainly when we're talking good, clean drinking water and how we handle our discharge, it is vital. So as, as plowing as this might have been, it is something that you have to do, because it is, again, critically important to all of us. Thank you. Commissioners, we will need a motion, and then we will do a roll call vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the attached resolutions adopting a final state revolving fund, drinking water slash drinking water revolving fund, project plan for water and wastewater system improvements, and designate the city manager as the authorized project representative.
Is there a second, Commissioner Protem?
Second.
Any other commissioner? Hearing any, or, excuse me, Commissioner Campana, any further comments?
No, I just think this is a very good project, it's going to benefit the city, I can see no negatives, I do not see any negatives to it.
Mayor Protem Reynolds.
No, nothing further.
If you will please conduct the, the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our next public hearing, which is for a new liquor license application. And clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, David Gill is planning to apply to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for a microbrewer license and for an on-premise tasting room permit for Drifa Brewing, DBA Marquette Brewing Cooperative, located at 501 South Lake Street. For MCL 436.15367C, the state requires applicants for on-premise tasting room permits obtain an affirmative, affirmative recommendation from the local legislative body prior to making application. The application has been routed to relevant city departments, with staff replying as follows. In the affirmative, police, fire, community development slash zoning treasure, the commission scheduled this public hearing during the March 11th, 2019 regular meeting. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the attached resolution recommending Michigan Liquor Control Commission's approval of a new on-premise tasting room permit for Drifa Brewing at 501 South Lake Street, Unit A, Marquette. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Public hearing is open. Any, any citizens wishing to address the commission on this topic, please do so.
Commissioners, I'm David Gill, and this is my public commentary, I just wanted to give you a little more background on, on what we're intending to do.
We have your address, please.
Sorry? Oh, 4130 County Road 550.
Thank you.
And the location is 501 South Lake Street, the old Jamar Building, a building that could use some new life in it with a new business there, in an area of town that really could also use a rejuvenation of some business there, as we've seen Marquette growing along the shoreline towards that direction. So one of our goals is to establish a business, a long-term business there that would upgrade that area, as well as encourage other businesses to locate in that area. As we know, the power plant is coming down, and the beach is now expanding, and so a microbrewery in that area would be a, a good sign of growth and, and people utilizing that area. We intend to provide good jobs and enhance Marquette's attractiveness to tourists, as well as to establish the first cooperative microbrewery in the state of Michigan, right here in our town of Marquette. So, the, the only other one that is being attempted in the state of Michigan is in Grand Rapids. When we started, they were about three to five years into their attempt to open a cooperative microbrewery, and since then, we're about a year or two ahead of them, so it's a point of pride for us in Marquette here to, to be the potential location of Marquette's first cooperatively owned, literally community-owned microbrewery. So, we intend to be a good neighbor, a quality business, and help Marquette be a, a quality destination. So I encourage you to vote positively in, in this regard, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the attached resolution recommending the Michigan, recommending Michigan Liquor Control Commission's approval of the onces premises tasting room permit for Drifa Brewing at 501 South Lake Street, Unit A, Marquette.
Second, please, Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Any other commissioner, Commissioner Reynolds comments?
My only comments is that I think Mr. Gill put them perfectly, I think that that'd be an awesome spot for something to be happening, and some rejuvenation down that way. I've spoken with you before on things that you, projects you've done, and you always do great things, and considering spring fermentation, so I just look forward to this in the future.
And I live in South Marquette, so I'm really excited to have more development down there, thank you very much, and to all the members of the co-op out there, way to, way to get ahead of GR, good job.
Any other commissioner comments?
I think it's great, too, it's a good neighborhood, update, that building's been vacant for a while, so I think it's great, get, get things going, South Marquette needs some help, good job.
Seeing no other commissioners desiring to make a comment, let me make one. I would like to get the call when I can get the first beer. Please.
Get free beer, right?
No, I'm happy to pay my first year, I just like the first one out of the tap, or what you could tell me is the right one. Commissioners, we'll do a motion, and then we'll do a roll call vote. So do I have a, we have a motion on the floor, it is now time for a roll call. Clerk, if you will, please conduct.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to the consent agenda, commissioners, I will need a motion to pass the consent
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as stated?
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
Nothing.
Mayor Protem?
The only thing is, I wanted to make note on 6F, is the Marquette Chamber of Commerce membership renewal. I am a board member, so I just want the city attorney, we spoke before the meeting, that it does, is not a conflict for me, but I just wanted to confirm that for the record.
It is not a conflict for you, and I think we went through this last year, you serve on the board, but you don't have any financial interest in the outcome of this motion.
I'm aware of that, I just like to make it clear for the public, and that's all I have.
Thank you. All those desiring to vote yes, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no, please signify by saying no. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to unfinished business and item number seven, which is the Presque Isle Station lease agreement. Clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, in the 1980s, the city entered into a long-term lease agreement with Terry Guilfoyle and Mike Horton, DBA Acorn renovations for the city-owned property at 2901 Island Beach Road. The original lease has since expired, and the lessees are interested in renewing the lease under the DBA Presque Isle Station. The city attorney has prepared the attached lease for consideration, and the lessees have agreed to the terms presented. The property lease, map, and certificate of insurance are included for your review. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's March 25, 2019 meeting, and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the April 8, 2019 meeting. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $500 per month in lease proceeds. Recommendation, approve the lease with Terry Guilfoyle and Mike Horton, DBA Presque Isle Station, for property at 2901 Island Beach Road, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the lease with Terry Guilfoyle and Mike Horton, DBA Presque Isle Station, for property at 2901 Island Beach Road, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any, Commissioner Schlegel, any further comments?
I think we've kind of beat this one up a little bit in the past, I'm ready to go.
Keep it going.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any against by saying no. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to new business, and just a moment of public explanation, items number eight and nine, really is a little procedure we have to go through for commissioners to be reimbursed for travel. You cannot by charter vote for your own reimbursement, therefore, we have to do it in two separate groups, where I will vote for theirs, and they will vote for mine.
Maybe.
This little archaic dance we do, but it, it does keep everything absolutely legal and on the up and up, so bear with this, this little process for a bit here if we can. Clerk, if you will, please read the background on item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Mayor Stonehouse and Commissioner Campana attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Conference held in Lansing, March 19 through 20, 2019. The following checks will be, be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Fred Stonehouse, check 99182970. Commissioner Dave Campana, check 99181170. Fiscal fact, total travel costs are $140. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2019 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Stonehouse in the amount of $70, and Commissioner Campana in the amount of $70 for the Michigan Municipal League Conference. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, I will need a motion. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Stonehouse in the amount of $70, and Commissioner Campana in the amount of $70 for the Michigan Municipal League Conference.
Second, please, Commissioner Smith.
Second.
I don't think we need to have further comments. All in favor, please signify by saying yes. Remember, okay, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
You must abstain. Please state your abstention.
Okay. Two abstentions. The abstentions being Commissioners Campana and Mayor Stonehouse.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. We have, I told you we're having fun with this. That brings us to item number nine. Mrs. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Commissioners Hill, Fraser, and Schlegel attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Conference held in Lansing, March 19 through 20, 2019. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Jen Hill, check number 99183970. Commissioner Pete Fraser, check 991871560. Commissioner Paul Schlegel, check 99187070. Fiscal effect, the total travel costs are $720. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2019 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Hill in the amount of $70, Commissioner Fraser in the amount of $560, and Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of $70 for the Michigan Municipal League Conference. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, a motion, please. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Hill in the amount of $70, Commissioner Fraser in the amount of $560, and Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of $70 for the Michigan Municipal League Conference.
And Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
All those signifying by an affirmative answer, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
We have two abstentions, three abstentions. Those abstentions are Commissioners Hill, Fraser, and Schlegel. That brings us down to item number 10, which is City Commissioner Policy Regarding Park Cemetery Rules and Regulations and Updating Them. Clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Park Cemetery was created in 1858 and has operated under a set of rules and regulations since 1872, with the most recent update occurring in 1971. The rules and regulations cover items such as operating hours, grave plantings, monuments, plot sizes, and burial requirements. The city sexton has carefully reviewed and updated the document to improve operations and align the guidelines to current conditions. Staff has also taken the opportunity to include regulations to accommodate green burials and mausoleums due to the overwhelming interest expressed by the public. Many of the changes and additions are based upon industry best practices and share many similarities with cemeteries in neighboring communities. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, adopt the city commission policy number 2019-01 regarding Park Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
There were two people who asked for time to speak. Now is your opportunity to do so.
Yes?
You may go ahead and begin.
I got 22 minutes?
Absolutely!
Then I'm gonna get my notes.
There's a trapdoor under there and in three minutes, you're gone, but...
Sounds good.
I will need your name, though, and your address, or physical address.
I'm Elizabeth Bates and I live at 208 Eagles Nest Road, which I realize is township rather than city, but I have taken an interest in green burial in the last year. I have been in contact with people in the Keweenaw who, you know, where this is now accepted at three cemeteries, five funeral homes, and have been speaking with a lot of people in and around Marquette and I'm finding that there is simply a lot of interest in it here. It's been going on nationally for years, but in Marquette, at this point in time, it is not permitted. And so, basically, those of us who have talked about it, read about it, are simply hoping that in the rules and regulations for Park Cemetery, that green burial would be permitted. And we realize that Mr. Albert has already sketched out an area. I drove by it the other day. My husband said that before paying for a site, we should go decide which grave we want to be in. But I am very impressed with Paul's plans. I'm impressed because we've had a lot of interest from various Commissioners and I'm very impressed that it's on the agenda tonight. So, I am just asking everyone to give very serious consideration. I hope that you go ahead and approve it and you do have to realize, I am in my 70s. And so, if we did it tonight, that'd be a really good idea. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, not anyone else, but if one other person desired to speak and... I will point out to the commission that Mr. Albert is in the audience, our sexton for the cemetery, and if we have any questions that we would need an expert answer to, we have that asset available to us. That brings us down to the point that we can make a motion if we desire. Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that we adopt the city commission policy number 2019-0 regarding Park Cemetery Rules and Regulations.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds, any further comments?
Just a couple. It is super cool. I, today alone, I had, I think, eight or eight to 10 emails from residents and in this, I think Mr. Lawrence pointed this out earlier, it's kind of been a resident initiative. People came forward to us and were interested in doing this and here we are doing this. And I had the opportunity to look over this and where this was located to, and this seems like a great idea and it's really cool. This is just really cool, like the city of Marquette's doing something kind of cool here and I'm glad that we get to be a part of it and I'm glad we can assist our residents with something that they are so passionate about.
Commissioner Campana?
I, Your Honor, thank you. I'm just happy to see this come before us for a vote because there's been a lot of citizen interest in this subject. We've been getting lots of emails and, you know, people bumping into you and saying they're for it. So, obviously, a lot of people are giving a lot of thought to it and I do believe we should move forward with it. We haven't updated the policy since 1971, so it's well overdue. And the other thing I got out of it by looking at it was, there are rules and regulations, so before you take up residence in one of our cemeteries, I would think you should, you know, go to our website and take a look at it or perhaps contact the sexton if he is able to, he will be able to help you, but, you know, just don't think you can go in there the next day. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners desiring comments? Commissioner Smith?
I went and actually looked at where this is gonna be in the cemetery yesterday. It was a very gloomy, foggy day to be out there, but it's a beautiful, peaceful spot. And folks tell me I was kind of morbid for doing that, but it's part of the planning process, so. Anyway, I think it's a great thing for the city of Marquette, a little more eco-friendly. I do wonder if it might fill up a little quickly, so we might need to look at adding more spots if it is truly as popular as we've been hearing. We've been getting a lot of communication on this topic, so we will see.
Any other Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been dying to talk about this tonight.
He's been waiting for that.
Yes. You know, I actually did some delving into the topic with a couple of the undertakers in town, the funeral homes. And, you know, what I was excited about was that they were excited about this option as well. It wasn't, you know, there's no, this isn't business, this is persons' wishes that we're dealing with here. And outside of being able to accommodate said wishes within a certain period of time that may come with a slightly larger expense than an average Monday through Friday service, I think that this is just a fabulous option for people and I'm also, you know, on the wagon with saying I'm glad to see this being addressed and adopted in our community. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Let me just give a cleanup comment again, I guess, that this was interesting and it was interesting because it was really citizens coming forward to the city, to the city commission and saying, "We have a problem and we have an idea and we have a solution to the problem." And laying out that solution and the city then being able, through the staff of the city, being able to work that solution into a way of doing business, into the rules and regulations and being able to kind of bring it full circle back to the city commission at that point for approval. So, when we look at how you respond to citizen-driven initiatives and citizen issues, this is a wonderful example of that, I think. It takes longer than people would like, I think, but the wheels of government sometimes have to churn really fine because we don't want abrupt decisions we've made, being made, we want good decisions. And that takes some time sometimes to do, but I'm very proud to be part of voting tonight and voting for this because I think it's a good step forward for the city and I think it just speaks well of everybody. A good event done, a good process being done and being done politely, is that a good way of saying it, and getting the job finished. Commissioners, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, that is a seven to zero vote. That brings us down to item number 11, which is the purchase, the purchase request for city-owned property on parcel 13, Hartwood Forest, and that will also be a roll call vote. So, Clerk, if you could please read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background, the Nocaman Trail Network has presented the city manager with a letter of intent to purchase approximately 25 acres of city-owned property, more commonly known as parcel 13 of the Hartwood Forest land. The property includes the NTN's established south trails, trailhead, parking lot, pavilion, and pump track. The letter of intent expresses the NTN's desire to work with the city to develop and maintain amenities for the trail network. As with all property in the city of Marquette, any development would be subject to local zoning. This property is currently zoned as conservative conservation/recreation, which provides for future development to be consistent with the existing public recreational use. Further provided resolution and city ordinance, the city manager has recommended the property sale be contingent upon an appraisal and local development agreement that outlines the investment and responsibilities for each party to the agreement. Fiscal effect, to be determined based on appraisal of land in a subsequent local development agreement. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell, which will provide direction for the city manager to begin negotiating a sale of the property, subject to the conditions listed, and bring back the sale to the city commission for final approval. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
There were several people who desired to address the commission on this issue. I believe Ms. Adams was the first one. Roberts, I'm sorry. I came close.
I live on Adams.
I came close.
It's close. Okay. So, when this first came, oh, Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street. When this first came up, in my mind, I'm picturing a plot of land, rectangle, a square or something, okay? So, then I look at the map, which we don't have up here, but it goes along 553 and then along Division, probably, I don't know if this is Pioneer Trailer Court or not. No, whatever this is, there are homes and buildings here, okay? But I believe the city owns this section. No? 3300?
I believe that's correct.
I think that's correct, too. And I am noticing that that section is now landlocked, if this goes through. So, I am asking, since we own it and we probably want to develop it, what are the plans for parcel 3300 if it is landlocked? I don't know if y'all have a map of this. That's my question. Thank you.
Kerry Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street. And forgive me if I read this because I, terrible public speaking. I'm speaking tonight as president of the Nocaman Trail Network. I'd like to ask the city commission to allow the city administration to have parcel 13 of the Hartwood property appraised. That, this is the parcel that the south NTN trailhead is on and where, as I stated to the city commission last year, we would like to build additional trails, a pump track, ideally offices, meeting rooms, and storage buildings. We are aware that the SEMCO easement will alter our vision, but we can make this work if we have control of the property and can work with the city and SEMCO. In fact, we can soon present an artist rendering of our dream home. When we first talked to the city administration about this property a year ago, there was no discussion of any easement being placed on the property. We know that the speed of the SEMCO pipeline being put in took the city by surprise and there was very little that we or the city could do about it. With that said, however, we believe that the NTN, as a trail developing nonprofit, have shown ourselves as good land stewards and do not need nor want any additional easements or encumbrances placed on the parcel. We would hope to move on final disposition of the property, assuming we can agree on issues and terms while SEMCO is still working on the property so as to maximize the amount of earth moving and landscaping time we can get from SEMCO. So, moving on this is fairly important to us. I'd like to remind the city, we have invested already approximately $100,000 in infrastructure there and we are reluctant to give up this location even with the SEMCO encumbrances. I'd also like to state that NTN is a nonprofit. We are 501(c)(3). Our 990 is available for all to see and we encourage you to look at it. We employ two full-time people, six to eight seasonal people and contract with many more. Our budget is approximately $800,000 a year with the majority coming from events, and I'm gonna cut my statement here. Ideally, this is what we would like to happen, regardless of the appraised value. We think the best path forward is for the city to transfer ownership of the entire parcel to NTN, given NTN's positive impact on the city and business revenue through increased taxes and tourism dollars and on quality of life to the residents of the central upper peninsula, especially that of Marquette. To ease any concerns about what happens if NTN ceases to exist, we would insist that the city have a revision clause for the property, that the land would be returned to the city, thus protecting you and the land. But I really encourage you to have the property appraised ASAP and I will be here if you have any additional questions for me.
Thank you. Ms. Brum, I believe you're next.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brum and I reside at 404 East Magnetic Street. Little bit of history for the people who don't know the history of the NTN is that they've been able to develop a world-class trail system that has put Marquette on the map for being a destination for trail riders for the last 20 years because the city granted them a no-cost lease to the trail property that they then developed, so that the trails on this property were developed with no payments being made to the city at any time during the development of these trails. The NTN, as a 501(c)(3) corporation, has to publicly display their 990 form, which is their tax form, and at present, the current tax form for the NTN on their website lists assets in excess of $1 million. Therefore, kudos to the NTN for in the last 20 years developing a world-class trail system that has assets of over $1 million. The cost to the citizens of Marquette has been the cost of the Hartwood Forest purchase, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, was in upwards of $5 million to begin with? Okay. There, the cost to the city of Marquette for buying that property, correct me again if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, we still haven't paid off that loan. Okay. So, a world-class trail system, which is viewed as an asset to the entire community, has been built by an organization where the taxpayers of the city of Marquette have been paying for that land ever since they started building on it. I ask you to consider that as you go forward with this. I see the writing on the wall. I do believe that the city is gonna vote to sell this property to the NTN. I would ask you, when you have it appraised, that the appraisal value continue, the world-class trail system, there are other world-class... trail system, there are other world-class trail systems that have been evaluated that can be costed out, as well as recouping some of the money that city taxpayers have paid for that land where the trails were developed. This is not the same as selling to a nonprofit that has a local impact with a few hundred thousand dollars at stake. This is literally a million-dollar business at stake that has a detrimental financial impact on the city of Marquette for paying for this land for a long time. And so I ask you to look to your fiduciary responsibility to the city of Marquette when setting the appraisal price for this property. Thank you.
Mr. Luttenberger, I believe you're next.
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. I originally came up here wondering what would the difference be between a lease agreement, continuing the lease agreement, and ownership? So thank you to the NTN president for mentioning exactly what's supposed to happen, or what they wish to happen. And I want to recommend that they are a group that has brought biking into town. They have brought outdoor enthusiasm to, let's face it, a spot that only had woods. I mean, we built the trails back, I mean, I remember helping ride the trails and confirm the trail rides. Basically, excuse me, we built it knowing that eventually this day would come. But at the same time, NTN doesn't have a local office site that you could walk into and ask them any questions about any of these things that they might have done. So in that sense, I encourage you to assist them in finding a home, literally finding a home in the city of Marquette that's visible, that's easy to access. A lot of these rides, a lot of the trails are up on Division and going towards the west, but at the same time, it's a good central location for the south trails to make it a meeting point to go back. In that sense, the yes, the cost of Hartwood Forest is expensive, and yes, we should probably recoup some of these plans. But again, my question is, could that be done through leasing? Could that be done through an extended cooperation agreement? And I only say that because selling property is always weird. I don't like the concept of a city selling property when there's a possibility that they don't. Because property's always going to be around, as long as you keep it under your, not control, but necessary tax issues, you know, just property levels. In that sense, would selling this property to the NTN, a nonprofit on this side of town, bring in more commercial business that would like to buy more of our property? Or is this a one-time, one-type of industry on this side of town? The Hartwood Forest, we've always proposed to sell spots off and portions of it. In that sense, I can't deny that we need money from it. Again, though, it seems like we are selling property that doesn't need to be sold, it needs to be managed. And that's my take, is please, if you can, help them manage the property, but not necessarily ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell, which will provide direction for the city manager to begin negotiating a sale of the property, subject to the conditions listed, and bring back the sale to the city commission for final approval. Commissioner Campana.
Couple of quick ideas here. First, should we address parcel 3300? Is that, what's the zoning on that? Is that up for sale, or is it possible to be sold? What's the zoning on that? Is it conservation/recreation?
Well, 3300 was not part of the original Hartwood purchase. It is, I believe, city-owned, but so was never considered for sale, or never was part of any of the processes that I've been involved with as far as potentially selling it. What you're looking at on the map for parcel 13 is what has been identified as potential future development by the Hartwood Ad hoc Committee. So in other words, I'm sorry, the property that we've already talked about selling, and that we've already agreed to sell either to Veridio or to Rippling River, was part of the property that was identified by the Hartwood to be sold, or could be developed immediately. Parcel 13 was put into another category, that it could be developed or reconsidered for development into the future or for sale, along with several other parcels. So it was never our intention to sell 13, at least in the first phase, at least at this time, but because they approached us and asked, we, I brought it to you for consideration, but 3300 was never considered for sale. And it's, I don't know what the zoning is. I believe it's city property. I'm not even going to swear on that, because some property in that area is also owned by the university, and I don't want to mix that up. But parcel 13 is, the way it's shaped now, was identified as a parcel that could be sold in the future.
Parcel 13, in our discussions, I was led to believe it's, it fits in the plans of the NTN, but it's not the most desirable piece of property for development, so kind of nice to get rid of it. It has deep valleys, rocky outcroppings. I may be wrong on that, but I believe that was what we discussed. And I do believe the money we get for it kind of goes towards reducing the debt on the Hartwood purchase, just as other properties that we have sold or will be selling, is that correct? So it's not a waste of money?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm in favor of this only because, well, and this is just the beginning of, it's an initial discussion for negotiations. We're not selling it tonight, or tomorrow, or the next week. This is, negotiations are starting. So this will be a process. And the NTN, you know, they have a track record of doing nice things with their trails. They created a world-class trail system out there. It's good for the city, it brings, you know, it provides recreation for our citizens, and it's a draw for people out of the area. So, you know, they're written up many times as doing great things. So I mean, it's all good, as far as I can see, and I hope we get a good price on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds.
I mean, Commissioner Campana kind of covered most of the bases, but just, I think it's important to note, this is step one. This will come back to us with an appraisal, which is important to do, and we can't sell city land for less than 80% of its value. And as the city manager mentioned, this will be going back towards paying our bonds off, so that was the whole intention of Hartwood and our entire Hartwood intention plan. I'm glad that the NTN is involved. I love the NTN and what they do, so I'm glad that we can offer something to them and maybe have the ability that they can continue to do great things out there.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the city attorney to comment on something. We received a resident comment that myself and Commissioner Hill should not vote on this subject, because in the past, we have stated that we would be interested in pursuing the option of selling this parcel to NTN. Just hoping that you could comment on the fact that we don't have anything personally to gain from this vote.
Well, I didn't hear it tonight, but I did receive a copy of the correspondence you're referring to, and I guess I've already determined that neither of you have a conflict. Taking positions in campaigns is part of the political process. That's what you do. You take positions, you look for support from certain interest groups that might vote for you, and that's just part of what you do as a candidate. So running for office, campaigning on a platform, and supporting a group is pretty natural and normal. And so having seen the letter, and I know I responded to you, but I would just reaffirm that neither of you have any conflict of interest and can vote on this particular item.
Thank you.
The other comments. Mr. Hill.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. There was a letter sent to the entire city commission and city manager. And I do, I also want to, the urgency of this, if you have driven out there and seen, the trees are down, there is, work has already started, and now there's going to be a gas line under that property. I grew up near a major interstate gas line, and that swath of land is kept open. It is not developable in any way, and it's a piece of vital infrastructure, and if we can find an entity that could actually, that's willing to take the land, that now it's basically mostly an easement for a gas line, I think we are in a position, as Commissioner Campana said, to someone who's actually willing to take this thing on. And it's, and then I think, I think, again, this is the first step in the negotiation, and that that's a vital first step, and I trust the city staff to do a good job in making the negotiation. Thank you.
Any other, city manager?
Just a point of clarification. NTN, myself and SEMCO did meet a week ago and went over the details of the easement, and I think we're all satisfied that the gas line will have a minimal effect on what they want to do. And one other thing I'd like to point out, and it was mentioned by Dr. Gottlieb, that they would prefer no future easements, however, I just want to make it, put it on the record that we do have obligations as far as conservation easements that are in current contracts with other developers, such as parcel 35, that parcel 13 would have been placed into a conservation easement as part of that deal. And however, we can work with NTN in crafting the easement to allow what they want to build on the property. So I mean, it's not going to kill the deal or prevent any development, it's just that we have an obligation, I believe, to create a conservation easement there, however, allow what they want to construct.
Any other commissioners? Let me just provide a little history to a comment that I think was uncalled for. When the city of Marquette purchased the Hartwood Forest, it purchased it for one reason, and that was recreation. And recreation in the form of the opportunity to get out and hike the trails, bike the trails, ski the trails, it was recreation purchase. The city, however, was not in any position to create those trails. If you waited for the city of Marquette to build those trails and attract people to be here and use them, we'd still be waiting. That's not the business of the city, to be able to skillfully do that. But we did have a group in town, the NTN, that had that skill and that was willing to do it. And they did it at no cost to the city. So the trails that are built, the trails that we love, the trails that bring in the economic development, the value to the city of Marquette, was literally done for the city for free. And the NTN performed that service for us. So if you look at a cooperative arrangement between a city government and a local 501(c)(3), that is an arrangement that I think arguably works. That doesn't mean that you're necessarily married to each other, it doesn't mean you don't have fights, it doesn't mean there's not friction and conflict, that's part of life. But the NTN has been certainly very remarkable in being able to do that, the city in turn benefiting from what the NTN has been able to do. So I wanted to make sure that everybody clearly understood that and was not left with an erroneous understanding of the situation. That said, commissioners, this will need to be a roll call vote, but we do have a motion on the floor, we do have a second. So, Madam Clerk, if you will conduct the roll call.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Vote passes seven to zero. That brings us down to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making those comments.
My name is Jean Baumann. My mailing address is 322 Eagle's Nest Road. My physical residence is a mile away from my mailbox. So I live in Powell Township, but I am also a potential resident of the beautiful Park Cemetery, which I got to know a little bit better as I worked on bringing green burial to Marquette, and I'm really pleased with the outcome of things. But I didn't want this discussion to wrap up without you all paying attention, and some of you actually went and looked, but the Prairie Mound section of Park Cemetery is located at the corner of the Eagle Lane and the Dove Lane. So where the eagle and the dove come together, we will rest.
Kerry Gottlieb, 1076. Something I wanted to, I cut out of my previous statement, I wanted to get it in here, because it came up, and now I can relax and say it easily. Our budget is approximately $800,000 a year for NTN. It's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, I'm aware of that. Most of it comes in from our events end of it, and most of it goes back to our events end of it. We have approximately $400,000 in assets that are depreciating and getting old. When somebody says we have $1 million on our 990, yeah, but it's mostly cash, which we need for our events. We keep about a half a year of events money in cash, so we can afford to do this. And the rest is in assets, which includes real estate. We are not very rich, and we would love to be in your wills, or your wills. And the other thing I did want to mention to Mr. Angeli is that we would be a really great conservation easement holder. We've proven ourselves as conservation easement holders. You don't have to look outside of NTN for conservation easements. And I want to finish up. Jewish tradition, which I am Jewish, is, green burial is our tradition. And if there's any place in the cemetery that should have green burial, isn't a new place. You should do it in the Jewish part. So you should all convert and do it, be buried in the Jewish part.
Sure.
I also live on that.
Yes, good to see you.
Hi there, Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street, and I was told I could talk on any subject. So I am returning to the island and the parking problem. Okay, I was told, I attended the last work session, and there is parking on both sides of the road. There is now no parking signs throughout that area. Cars are still parking there. But we are not giving tickets because it is a destination. So we are going to spend taxpayer money to do a trolley, or, now you have awakened the sleeping giant, change the hours of walking and riding in on the island. I don't think that's fair, and so I'm going to keep bringing this up until we decide what we're doing. But as a destination, maybe tomorrow, I'm going to have a destination of Donkers. And maybe I'm going to drive down on Washington Street and just happen to see that the only spot there says, "No parking." Does that mean I will not get a ticket? I think not. So it's good for the kids, and I have no objection to them jumping and enjoying black rocks. It's good enough for me. The other thing is, I have looked at pictured rocks, Munising Falls, any of them in the Kiwanah, and you know what? They all have a parking lot, and you walk to see the scenic wonders of the UP. I see that no different than here. Let people park, let all those kids, they're not kids, they're young adults. They know how to read, no parking, okay? Let them all park down by the ban shell, walk that little bit up to the rocks, and do their jumping, and then walk. do their jumping, and then walk back on down, and get in their car, and go for a pizza or whatever. When we were kids, we biked it, for Pete's sakes. So, we're not talking something impossible here. We're not talking about changing the whole city of Marquette and getting everybody in an uproar over some kid's parking and not getting a ticket, and blocking the ambulance route. That's all I want to say, but I would like you to really think about that. Thank you.
Andrew Lawrence, 1406 West Avenue. I want to thank you guys tonight. I appreciated all of your votes, I think we did the right thing tonight. Congratulations, Green Burial and NTN, I'm looking forward to that moving forward. I think the thing about NTN is that they perform a vital function that the government cannot, and you put it very well, that's something, that they don't pay taxes as a 501(c)(3) because that's something the government cannot do, and twenty years of a track record of world-class tracks in Marquette is, is a pretty fundamental service, I think, for Marquette, you bring in tax dollars that are kind of immeasurable, so. Also, I, I just want to leave you with the thought of hopefully someday this commission can start to explore that same enthusiasm of granting liquor license to cannabis establishments as well. So, thank you.
Hi, Charlie West, 440 East Prospect. Green Burials, thanks, you guys are amazing, I mean, less than half a year, and it's happening, it's wonderful, thanks, you guys are doing a great job.
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. I'm going to quickly, just quickly, mention this, but again, this, the Miney Journal put out a part, or a story about a potential spaceport site, and I just wanted to point out that, when I came up here in 2015 to first discuss it, or earlier when we were discussing the, the hospital reuse, there was only one, what's called Mars Analog Station, which is a place where you can go and be a scientist, simulating the, the life on Mars. There are now six around the world. So in that short amount of time, we, the science itself, the, the, I guess, industry of going into outer space has just expanded tremendously, and I would like you to, to hopefully encourage the city lobbyists in Lansing to talk to these folks down here. By the way, I had nothing to do with this story, I absolutely was not contacted, I absolutely was surprised by seeing it in the paper, and I'm glad that there's at least talk about it going to Sawyer. The residual science that comes from that, the residual businesses that come from that, the ability to put it into our high school, the ability for Cliffs, when you're encouraging them to bring mining back here, this is something that works directly with that, I mean, directly, you need steel to go up, so, directly with that. And, just to be clear, the, our, bless you, the ROI that would come off of that isn't going to be returned right away, and I get that, it's about six years out, minimum, but again, 2020 is the, the key point for a lot of large ships to go to the moon, so, or to at least test themselves to see if they can go to the moon. Now, aside from any war or major world war, this is going to be an industry. So what I'm asking tonight is, who do we have, as, instead of a lobbyist, who do we have as an industry consortium, or group, or, or, who do we have that will go out and find industry for the city, and come back and give us presentations like that tonight? So again, I've, I've been talking about this for a while, and I'm sorry, I just want to say that there are six locations in the world, if you want to go and become a Mars astronaut, there are eight more being presented within the next five years. They're all over the world, you can go to Israel, you can go to China, you can go to Finland, you can go to Iceland, you can go to Canada, there's the Arctic Pole in, what you call it, in Alaska. There are a lot of places that are right now needing support, and when I say support, I mean the, the kids that are in third grade right now to be their engineers. They, that is the course that they can improve on, or, or take, if you're giving them the option. So I'd just like to say, there is a spaceport option, please consider it. Thank you.
Frank Jeff Erle, these are my opinions. As relayed twice before, to the best of my knowledge, the basis of Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Frazier's lie about the wives began April 25, 2016, at one hour, three minutes, forty-eight seconds, when I mentioned wanting a boathouse, quote, "Even a place for your wife to store her boat." Mr. Campana continued the meeting as if nothing derogatory was said, because nothing was, the remark was positive. Had I bad-mouthed any spouse, he'd have taken delight in banging that little hammer. Neither accuser is able to voice a word of what they thought I'd said, yet they're comfortable repeating their lie even after it was refuted in agonizing detail. Mr. Frazier wasn't even here that night. He enjoys ganging up on an adversary, behavior which I've learned was prevalent at the high school while he attended. Because Mr. Frazier has no clue, the instigator, Ms. Reynolds, needs to specify what she heard. With no example, these utterances are defamatory and slanderous. I will not have the public believing I do such a thing in the context that my accusers claim. The difference between us is my comments are researched and delivered with specifics, which my opposition seldom have the decency to offer. This explains why Mr. Frazier needed Mr. Campana to bail him out March 11th, with the weird assumption that Mr. Frazier had referred to my belief that the wives' membership influenced the vote. Someone talking behind me here. I dare anyone to refute that truth. In fact, January 29, 2014, Mr. Viter wrote, "We are now at a point where a new approach must be considered, our spouses are active members of the rowing club," end quote. Those who doubt my word about the Frazier lie need only ask my accusers what they think I said, they don't know. Ms. Reynolds has asked to research this, I have every right to know since such a public stink has risen, from April 2016 no less. Three years ago, yet they want the public believing I routinely do this instead of never. At first, Ms. Reynolds left me wondering if I had misspoken, no, the comment insulted no one, as well as any comment ever, including wife, wives, or spouse. Notice how Mr. Campana never accused me, he's best suited to end this mess, he knows better than anyone that I never did that. Our chair needs to rein in Mr. Frazier. Two meetings in a row, he said I complained about all this board does, every mayor, every member, as if he'd hit a replay button. I'd commended the peer proposals March 11th, and the fireworks ordinance March 25th, just before his lies. I spoke highly of the Bodico Project, and the realignment at Cliff's Dull, Mr. Frazier only hears the negative, the positive blows right by him. All mayors, all members? No two of us agree always, but I've respected many. Commissioners Jim Schneider, Carrollson, Shadow, DePietro, Tollison, Carrollson, Campenzi, Potvin, Hill, and Smith. Ad managers Ackla invited to the list. It's clear that I demonstrate our love for our city, if I didn't, I would live elsewhere.
Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us now to comments from the commission, Commissioner Smith, if you could begin us.
Sure, we've had an eventful night. I don't think I'm going to revisit any of your topics from tonight, I feel like we've covered them already. I did want to say, last week, we also had a busy week, we had a work session on Prescott Isle, which I know we will revisit again at a later date. Lake Shore Boulevard, we had a public info session that was well-attended, got some information out to the public on that, twelve million dollar potential project. And then the, the UP Health System had a reception and ribbon-cutting that the commission attended as well, and we're excited to see that off the ground. Just a lot going on in the city right now, I know these meetings can be a little bit daunting, but we're doing a lot of work behind the scenes too, mainly city staff, and I appreciate the people that do come out and watch, and the people who are watching on TV, you know, it's, it's not an easy gig, but it's worth it. Thanks, guys.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great, great meeting tonight, thank you for all the input, and thanks for making time out of your, your week to come in and speak about things that you're so passionate about, everybody involved tonight, thank you. I, I really don't have much else to say as well, I would say a couple of quick things, and that is, please be careful, lots more traffic out there right now with the kids, being out, enjoying some warmer temperatures, so be aware, and, you know, make sure that, that we're taking care of our, our people as they're using our sidewalks now that they can actually see them. So, enjoy the weather, I know we're going to have a little shot here in the arm at the end of the week, but it should be smooth sailing after that, I'll knock on wood, so, thank you all.
Yeah, I also am not going to revisit the topics from this evening, but two quick things. I do think in the past we have recognized groups, user, groups that have gone successfully to states and all sorts of things, so as a commission, I don't think that that would, I think that would be kind of cool. I know we did it with the Baseball Legion team in the past, and also the under seventeen team before. And then the only other comment I have is to, I guess it's to Mr. Lawrence, or brought it up, but we do have a forum scheduled on marijuana for May 6th, and that'll be, I think it's 5:15 in the citizens forum, and that'll be our first forum on marijuana, I had the same feeling as I was voting for another brewery tonight, but it's still something cool happening, and I'm glad we're still being, this is only less than a month away for our next meeting on marijuana, so, and that is all.
Mr. Campana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much, just, this is a month of five Mondays, so our next meeting is three weeks from now, so don't show up in two weeks, you'll be by yourself. I'm glad the green burial got passed tonight, I wish all our agenda items were that easy. Like the gentleman says, it was brought up, discussed, and passed in record time, so, and I think everybody's happy with it. And lastly, yes, this Prescott Isle parking prob, it's not a parking problem, it's a car congestion problem. We need to hear what people think about this, so don't hesitate to keep hammering us with your opinions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Frazier?
Good meeting, green burial got passed, I don't know much about it, but I'll research it more, some more, but I do know that NMU is working on the same thing, they're doing a study behind the DNR office, they get all the places they're doing green burials to, in a different way, got an outdoor research facility in a different way, but they're looking for law enforcement. Parking on the island, that's, they, they do enforce that, their architect's been issued, it'll get taken care of eventually, you know, if it get done, and, for example, I mean, comments and the person comment, Ms. Verto? I grew up here, my family goes back to Peter White days, so I think they've done a little bit for the community in the area, including Prescott Isle, and I don't think you're, I went to high school from late eighties or ninety-three, I don't think you lived in town by then, I think, I've heard you're from Chicago area. So you're welcome to talk to my, my daughter's sixth grade teacher was my high school football coach. So friends, I'm today, he could tell you all about what it's like in high school, I don't know where you're getting this information from, talk all you want, but as far as, you've been known to insult, you just spent three minutes insulting everybody on the, on the commission that you don't like today. Again, most people come here and talk about the city, or what the city's doing, about problems in the city, they don't sit and spend their time commenting about what commissioner's done three years ago, or a year ago, or months ago, or whatever, and compared with their, their, somebody has influenced something, but that's what you do, everybody, you mentioned Mr. DePietro, he was a mayor for a while, he will say the same thing, and every, you've insulted every mayor that's been here. You'd like to voice your opinion, which is fine, that's what we're here for, voice your opinion, but we just ask not to include our families in the comments, that's all we ask.
Two quick things regarding Lake Shore Boulevard and the work session we had last week, there is, the presentation boards are available online on the city website, so if you go to marquetmi.gov, you can see what we looked at as we continue this very important conversation that's going to have a big impact on the city. And yes, inviting you to Monday, May 6th, at 5:15 at the Lakeview Arena, citizens forum, starting the conversation, and again, we're going to talk about where in the city we want to do, where these establishments might be, and what types. Those are the questions, as I understand them right now, in front of us. We have the legal authority, we are required to come up with these, these regulations regarding where and how many, in collaboration with what other state, whatever state regulations come down to us. And finally, there is an economic impact study coming about travel by the end of the month, or sometime in early May, and we're going to have a lot more information that we've never had before, from what I understand, about the economic impact of tourism, and I think it'll make, elevate our conversation about some of the things that we're talking about, and what, understanding really how these things flow, because it has changed quite a bit just in the last five years here in Marquette. Thank you, everyone, for your, yeah, your passion and commitment, and, yeah, keep those shovels at the ready. Nope.
Couple of quick hits. We need to remember that the We Energies location, the site, is privately owned. The city will not drive nor control what We Energies does with that site. Hopefully they'll take it down, hopefully they're carted away, we're not developing, that is a We Energies property, and we'll see what happens with it. So, please don't get too far ahead of that thought process. Reiterating again, the Marquette drinking and sewer and stormwater rates are in the middle of the pack for the Upper Peninsula. So when you see somebody say among the highest in the state, please understand that's somebody who got the best information in the world from Facebook, and it ain't true. The real data, and you can get with our water department, they'll be happy to show you the, the official stuff in the state, is, is where we really are, which is about the middle of the pack. Looking forward to the community brewery, I think that's going to be fun, I think it's going to be a nice thing for that area of town, it's going to really provide, I think, a little, little more emphasis for, for some good solid development there. Maybe the city manager can comment on this, but I, it's my understanding that Prescott Isle will be receiving the attention of the Marquette Police Department and the Park Patrol for the purpose of leaving small slips of paper under your windshield. In other words, I, my understanding is they will be writing tickets and doing such in a more aggressive manner. So again, I think the city manager can comment on that. Speaking of economic impact studies, in the week, the one for the state of Michigan that went out and actually looked at port activity and waterfront activity, and the value of waterfronts, both recreationally and tourist-wise, only waterfronts, will also be released. So we'll have more data than we've, we've had in a long time to be able to, to really look at. Lastly, the last time I walked in the Lakeview Arena on the right-hand side of the lobby was the office for the No Caiman on Trails Network. So anybody saying they're not in town, they need to walk in the lobby of the Lakeview Arena, look right there, there's the office, people in there, they're working. So again, we've got to be careful that when we make statements, that we're able to have the right information to make that statement valid. City manager, time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll deal with Prescott Isle first. The police department, the comment was made about the no parking signs, they were placed there in August of last year. Once the signs were put into place, the police department began enforcing the parking. They issued about a hundred and forty tickets in that month, between October, I'm sorry, August 8th to about September 8th. Ninety percent of them have been paid. There were some that have not been paid, but that's, that's kind of the norm. So, they, they have been aggressive in the one month the signage was there, and they will continue to be aggressive in the coming months. I'm also, and the commission has also already received an email to this regard, but I'm also looking at the costs of the posts, or ballards, or bollards, or boulders along the route that might prevent cars from parking. I think from my perspective, the investment might be minimal, and they might be placed in such a way as to both accommodate the vehicles and the pedestrians, so that answers that question. Another comment for the police department, there was a comment earlier about graffiti. I know that the police department has identified two people responsible for most of the graffiti in town. That is still pending, their, their charges, however, I believe we have others that are doing it as well. On that same note, the Marquette Beautification Committee has put together a subcommittee that is going to be dealing with graffiti, and I know that they've, are working with city staff, and they put together a group that is willing, ready, willing, and able to go out and clean graffiti. They've already identified solvents and materials that can be used to be, to be clean, and I think they want to get going as soon as the think they want to get going as soon as the police department is done with their investigation. So, the graffiti is being addressed. I want to thank, he left, but I want to thank Paul Albert for the work he put into the blue, the blue, the, the burials, the green burials, not blue burials, well, maybe your blue at some point, but, but green burials. Paul is retiring this month, after almost three decades with the city, and he'll be, he'll be greatly missed, he's, he's been a very good employee, he's been a great sexton, he's also our arborist, and he's done a lot of good work, but I just wanted to thank him, I wish, I wish he was still here. I have open office hours this week, Wednesday, 10 a.m., Peter White Public Library, and I think that's it. Thank you.